ASEAN Japan Business Idea Contest, aiming to seize the potential business application from space. SISA has cooperated with its partners agencies, the National Space Policy Secretariat Cabinet Office Japan, to organize the Asia round contest S-Booster since the year 2018. Startup SME and companies from Thailand and Asia countries are encouraged to be part of space economy and space business by seeking out business ideas to make use of the data resources in the space. The daily life and downstream emergency or auto service, ABUSAP, more than 300 ideas were applied from the Asia-Oceania region and more than 100 ideas from Thailand. In parallel this year, Thailand is hosting the local program called Space Economy Listing Of. This could be another form of joint collaboration or channel to incubate and accelerate Thai startup and to the global program. I hope that today you will gain more experience from this seminar and from this program. Thank you for participating to our program and I hope you have a good luck and good success today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Dhamlong Nammoth, for your wonderful remark. And now may I invite the representative from S-Booster Secretariat, Ms. Yoko Kodaya, Cabinet Office of Japan, to deliver the remarks and introduction of S-Booster. Please welcome her.
My name is Yoko Kodaya from National Space Policy Secretariat Cabinet Office. And as introduced at the beginning, S-Booster is a space-based business idea contest composed with a process of document screening to select some finalists and pitch presentation to select the finalists and also final presentation to decide the winner by the judges. Additionally, beyond the competition, those who are selected as a finalist, there are programs for mentoring and practical workshops and this is one of the special feature of S-Booster. And some of you may be thinking, space-based business idea contest is just about a rocket launch or a satellite launch, but it's not limited to those areas. Satellite navigation is one of the biggest components, bringing you to create your business idea by utilizing its services and there are many more potentials. Today, we are inviting two winners of S-Booster 2021 and also the investor at the same time and one of the amazing mentors of S-Booster and also the leading person of space economy in Thailand and Asia. Please maximize the opportunity to see the space-based business idea perspective, tips and hints of how winning teams reach out to their ideas. And S-Booster 2022 is scheduled to open the call from next month. So please stay tuned in our S-Booster website and we look forward to your ideas. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Yoko Yodaka. Next, I would like to invite two experienced finalist winners from Thailand and Japan. First of all, let me begin with the winner from Thailand, Ms. Kanchanit Thamrongbunget, S-Booster 2021 grand prize winner ECO Space Team to share her experience with us. Please give her a round of applause.
Good morning. I'm Kanchanit. I'm a founder of ECO Space and it's my honor to join this session and share the experience that I got from S-Booster. First of all, I would like to start my session with this picture. And I don't know, when you see this, how do you feel? Some of you may feel frustrated and ask yourself, similar to me, when I saw this picture. I asked myself that based on this picture, how can I release these realities of forest fire? If you have kind of those feeling, I think you said in a right room now, because we are same kind of people. We believe that technology and innovation should serve and support environment and fight with the climate change. And I hope next 10 minutes that I will present will benefit for you. Okay, let me share you about who we are. ECO Space is actually, we are the internal startup sponsored by AAS, the largest mobile operator in Thailand. And currently, I still work in AAS. And yes, it's my deeply honored that we got the grand prize from S-Booster 2021 last year and sponsored prize from Sony. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you so much, Cabinet Office of Japan, S-Booster Secretariat, to open the opportunity for small startup lawyers to join this kind of platform. I think we can, many things, it's more than a grand prize. We got friends, we have a chance to access to the community of friends and more than that, we have a chance to work with a mentor, an amazing mentor. And it's good luck for you that you will hear to him today in the panel talk session also. ECO Space started on 2019 and we passionate to fight with the forest fire in Thailand. And we developed the sensor and try to install in the real environment. Even during the pandemic time, we still went out and went into the forest and test in many parts of national parks. And October 2020, we have a chance to work with University of Tokyo by using the IoT satellites of the University of Tokyo as a communication in non-internet area connected via the LoRaWAN. And then the early February in the Wi-Fi season in the north of Thailand, we have a chance to work with a drone partner in the real situations of Wi-Fi, we use the drone to mitigate the situation, work with our IoT monitoring. And yes, at the end of the year, we are in the period of run and install our sensor node for the proof of concept and more than that, we got the grand prize of S-Booster and we join S-Booster mentor session. And this year, beginning of this year, in the period of forest fire that you may saw the news, that is the period of forest fire happen in the north of Thailand, we still fighting and work closely with the National Park Staff, our local community. And our project, when we work with University of Tokyo and we test our prototype, our story has been public in National Geographic Thailand, October 2020. Okay, I think we all know that the negative impact of climate change is undeniable currently. And this effect drive the Wi-Fi happen around the world. As you can see, there's viral of heartbreaking photo. The worst thing of this is, no one can guarantee this story will not happen to us one day. Why? Because the current technology is quite a bit delay to detect the fire hotspot. Currently, it's around 3 to 6 hour. And more than that, we still have a limitation in the areas of fire hotspot normally happen in non-internet area. It's quite difficult to install any digital equipment there. That is the limitation and challenge turn the one of the most beautiful city in Thailand, Chiang Mai, to be most politic city in the world in 2020. Some of you may remember at that time. And this is the current situation. Last couple day ago, happened in Chiang Mai and National Park Staff and local people fight with the forest fire without any technology support. I mean, yes, we have, but in terms of a field that they need to go enter to the area. This is thing that make us, inspire us and we will put all the effort to fight with this. First of all, I would like to show you the full state of forest fire development to make you more understand why the early detection is the key important. First, the first step is before Wi-Fi. Second is the early step. Early step mean they just start to have a framing and it's take not more than one hour. The penetration, it should not much. And the third step is fully developed and after the forest fire is a false state. The problem of the delay detection is bring to the difficulty to mitigate the situation and you know, is dangerous and risk for the people to enter to those area. And more than that, finally, as we know, is create pollution finally. Therefore, our passion is how can we develop something that help staff and people in local area that can detect the forest fire pattern within 15 or 20 minutes? That is a quite real same as if you have a house. Okay, let's say that you have alarm, fire alarm in your house. And they said that their performance to detect the smoke and frame, they will alarm to you within 3 hour. Do you accept that? If not, yes, the same feeling. We will not accept that because the forest is our house also. It's not a house for us, it's a house for a next generation. That's why we would like to encourage and ask the collaboration from all of you, no matter who you are, to help and support and fight with this. Because the reality will come and come every year. And to achieve this requirement is not only the digital and technology part because technology is very simple. It's IoT things connectivity and you use a satellite communicate and dialing uplink. Difficult part is how we collaborate and sharing knowledge to fasten up this technology to solve the problem fast. This is the kind of our passion that I would like to utilize this platform to call out. That's why ECO Space, we integrate and utilize satellite data for the downstream application. We hybrid the solution, Wi-Fi early warning detection. As you can see, it's the real environment that we install. We install in a tree. And on the right hand side is our gateway, LoRa gateway that we install on the top of the mountain. Okay, we combine three technology. First one is a satellite. We utilize the data from remote sensing satellite and also the IoT satellite to send a small data amount used as communication connectivity in a non-internet area. And also, we understand that from the satellite of detect the hotspot. They still have a limitation in term orbital and everything. Therefore, they need support. They need to collaborate and work each other with a ground sensor which can detect fast and use the satellites as communication. That's why we have a sensor set to send the data every 15 minutes, including CO, CO2, smoke, temperature, humidity. And we have a software like a simple AI to detect and monitor the pattern that show that maybe in that area have a patterns of forest fire. And within 15 minutes after we file the pattern, we will send a warning message to the chat group of the local people. It's very simple. We don't have application, we don't have website because local people don't want to have more application. We just send a lot to the chat group. More than that, we can share the location to a drone partner. They can send a drone directly to the sensor location in order to mitigate the situation fast. And also, we integrate with 4G and 5G in the area that they have internet connectivity. How it work? As I mentioned previously, we use the data, thank you so much, from SISA. We got a lot of support from SISA in order to share the data of hotspot, historical hotspot tree of past year and then we map the critical area. Because in fact, you cannot install a million sensor in the large area of national park, but you can define the critical area or potential area and you install the equipment is similar like factory. Factory, they also install this kind of equipment in the machine that have potential to have a frame, spark the frame and create the fire. It's the same idea. We do that. And this is a real map. The orange highlight is a critical area that we got from remote sensing satellite that we work with SISA. And then we install the sensor node around that. We try to install based on the grid map in those area in order that our sensor will can detect any data from those area. And the data will send to the gateway. In the non-internet area, currently, we use LoRaWAN work with IoT that can receive the data from LoRa. And in the areas that we have 4G, we can send the data to the crowd immediately, every 15 minutes. After test, if we find any pattern, we will send a message to local community within 15 minutes. That is our prototype case. And last year before S-Booster, we have a chance to do the proof of concept in one of national parks and we try to, we install and we test and we collect the data. And in the beginnings of this year, we installed a gateway of LoRa in the tops of the mountain in order to test the conditions of LoRaWAN in the pocket area. And even yesterday, we have a discussion because now is the seasonal of Wi-Fi. We work closely with government staff and this is our super team. We are small and we have eight member. But the key thing that I would like to show is not how expert we are. In fact, all of us, we would like to call ourselves that we are non-state tech people. The thing is, I would like to tell you very honestly, before I join S-Booster, my best knowledge about space technology is Star War movie. I don't know anything, that's a fact. Actually, I am a business person. I not know anything about satellites. I don't know anything about low earth orbit, moon landing, nothing. But one thing that I know is spare business opportunity. And I know that if I would like to utilize data that can get it in the large area, satellite is one of source that I should study and explore. You may wonder that why the persons who call myself that I'm non-state person, why we can win the grand prize of S-Booster? And this is the answer. Actually, we can join, we be join, actually, we are the finalist S-Booster in 2019. With very humble, we know little things about space but our solution is quite very important that why we pass to the finalist. But I have a great mentor, he here also, Mr. Idekata. I'm very proud that I have, he is a mentor and I work with him closely. I'm not get any prize in 2019. But the thing that I got from 2019 is friends. One of my friends worked in University of Tokyo and I asked them that I have a project of forest fire and we would like to overcome the challenge that we don't have non-internet, those areas, non-internet area and how we can send the data via LoRaWAN. And from 2019, we start the projects of early warning detection. And that's why this year, we win a grand prize. We still have our same mentor and thank you so much. And another mentor, Mr. Masayuki Sakata. And we work very hard, very hard and we learn a lot. We learn a lot from S-Booster. I think the key part of S-Booster is, it's not a competition though. Actually, it's a community, community that you can absorb the energy and passions of people who warranty themselves to overcome any challenge that disaster or anything. They have their, they inspire us every time that I join this community. That's why I love and I come back in 2021 again. Even they set us online competition. And this is my conclusion. If someone asked me that they would like to join S-Booster but they still have fear or it's Asia-Oceania, we are small startup, we just seeding state or whatever. I think we join S-Booster not, we want to get a reward. Yeah, finally, we want to. But the biggest reward for me is the community and friends. I think those is assets that you can leverage and I'm already did it and it's show result today. I would like to end my session with decor. I love it always Star War. You don't have to be great to start, but you have to start to be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kanchanit Thamrongbunget, for your inspiring and heartfelt remark. Next, I would like to invite Mr. Akihiro Iwaki, S-Booster 2021 Special Judges Prize winner, Star Signal Solutions. Please welcome him to the stage. He is, yeah, he is on Zoom.
Hello, can see my slide? Well. Maybe, I hope my slide is on the screen.
Yes, just slides on the screen.
Thank you. Yes, so thank you very much for the invitation and introduction. Let me start with this slide and and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the organizers and sponsors of MGA Conference and S-Booster 21. I'm so excited to make a presentation and introduce our business idea by Star Signal Solutions in front of the GNSS experts today. Before doing so, please allow me to introduce myself and talk about background history of this business idea. I'm Akihiro Iwaki. I'm working for JAXA in Tokyo. I have worked in several departments in Japanese government, including Next and Cabinet Office. Last year, when I applied to the S-Booster program, I was working in Vienna, Austria as a secretary into permanent mission of Japan to the international organizations in Vienna. I was seconded from JAXA to the mission for the work in the United Nations Committee on the Peaceful Uses of Outer Space, UN COPROHS. During my term in Vienna, UN COPROHS adopted 21 guidelines for the long-term sustainability of outer space activities in 2019, as shown in this slide. The adoption of the LTS guidelines was a historic achievement of the committee after nine years discussion in the working group for addressing the issues of sustainability of outer space activities. The guidelines comprise a compendium of internationally recognized measures for ensuring the long-term sustainability of outer space activities and in particular, enhancing the safety of space operations. These LTS guidelines were great sources of inspiration for me to develop a new business idea that I will introduce today. The LTS guidelines is a kind of list of what to do in outer space field. There is a lot of opportunity for new businesses. This is a key question for me and for our team, Star Signal Solutions. Can we say that today's outer space activities will be sustainable forever? This is also the question for all of us working in the outer space field and all of us who are living on the planet Earth because our society relies on space assets, of course, including global navigation satellites, as much as we cannot imagine our lives without them. As you can see from this graph, the development of the space business has led to the launch of more commercial satellites in the past few years than never before. Humanity has never experienced this dynamic expansion of numbers of satellites. The number of space objects in orbit has more than tripled in the past 30 years. If we count all space objects, including tiny space debris, the total number is 330 million. It is more than four times as many cars driving all over Japan. Furthermore, those space objects are flying around at speed faster than the bullet without any traffic rules. This is causing the problem of traffic accidents in outer space. If a single accident occurred, the satellite is destroyed in an instant. The debris created by the accident cause other new accidents. In the course of this chain of accidents, a large amount of debris is generated one after another. This cascade of accidents may cause various space-based services to suddenly become unusable around the world. This risk has already weighted heavily on the space activities. This is operation sequence that JAXA is following to avoid space traffic accidents. JAXA receives more than 300 approaching debris alerts, CDMs, to avoid space traffic accidents every day and analyzes them to make avoidance plans. Complex calculations by experts are also required for the planning. This is not an easy task for anyone. So our Star Signal Solutions cloud-based software can streamline this operation sequence. Let me show you a Snapchat of the software. Our navigation system identifies only those approaches that are truly dangerous and shows a specific date, time and method of avoidance in an easy to understand manner. With our service, satellite operators can easily and reliably avoid collisions by simply following the instructions of the navigation system. They can concentrate on their core satellite business without being troubled by hundreds of alerts popping up in their operation windows. A precise understanding of the space situation is necessary to realize this navigation system. For this purpose, the ground-based observation is limited in its performance. Special satellites are also used but they are very expensive, costing around $100 million each. We will solve this problem by using something those are already in outer space. That's what Star Tracker is all about. Many satellites have cameras to look at the stars for attitude acquisition. Usually, the space objects reflected in those cameras are indistinguishable and are just noise. However, our image processing technology can turn them into variable resources for detecting space objects. As a result of the simulation, we found that with only four Star Trackers equipped with our technique, we can observe more than 90 We can observe more than ninety percent of the space objects within one hundred kilometer up and down. With observed position and direction of the objects, we can predict their orbits. By combining this data with existing data, we will create a data set of the space situation. And based on this SSA data, we will provide a SARS-type collision avoidance navigation system to satellite operators. We are a team of experts in JAXA, holding relevant patents, know-how and awards. But we have a lot of work to do and we need a lot of support, especially for materializing this idea. That was the biggest motivation for us to join the S Booster program. Through the S Booster program and its mentoring support, we could develop this business concept. The need for this service will dramatically increase in the future. In the next decade, the number of satellites will increase tenfold, the proximity of alerts will also increase tenfold to a hundredfold. Furthermore, small satellites will start to fly freely in orbit with small propulsion systems. In addition, the services we are looking at are not limited to the collision avoidance. SSA data we obtained with Star Trackers is like a Google map for outer space. We will provide solutions for all kinds of space activities. Our mission is to protect the the outer space environment by preventing space traffic accidents. And make space activities sustainable for future generations as well. We are happy to work with various satellite operators for helping their satellite operation. And utilizing their space, sorry, their star trackers on their satellites. Please feel free to contact me if you are interested in our activities, thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Akihiro Iwaki, for your fascinating talk. Now, let's move on to the panel talk. I would like to invite two of our honorable guests who are here in our conference to the stage and the other two speaker online, please get ready. Now, please welcome the first speaker, Ms. Kanjanit Tamrong Bunget, S Booster two thousand twenty-one Grand Prize winner, Eko Spade to the stage, please. Next, Mr. Akihiro Iwaki, S Booster two thousand twenty-one Special Judges Prize winner, Star Signal Solutions. I believe you are still online with us, okay, I see you now, alright, and. Next, Mr. Hideetaka Oki, Space Evangelist, Co-Founder and Director, Spaceport Japan, please welcome him to the stage. And the last person, Ms. Tong Hatai Guwanun, Managing Partner, Inspire Company Limited. Please welcome her, she is doing it online.
Hi.
Hi, Kha, sati kha.
Sati kha.
And also, our moderator for this session, Dr. Damrong Grit Niamh Muat from JISDA, please welcome him.
Once again, good morning, and I think like I have thirty, only thirty minutes for for our value speakers. We have many questions, many things in mind, but I I let me me start. With something that our participants want to know. So, let me start with Ms. Kanjanit. How did you know S Booster and why why you participate in S Booster at the very first maybe?
Okay, in fact, I know one, one of my friend, he just finished PhD. And just come back and he said that in two thousand nineteen, I think it's the first year that. S Booster allowed for other country to join this platform and he quite exciting and he said that. People, he he called me people, oh, you you have lots of projects and idea, why don't we 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 do some things? In term of space business opportunity, that's why we we start, from my friend, that he just come back from from Japan.
Connection is maybe very important.
Very important, kha, very important.
So, let me move to Mr. Iwaki. Uh. Uh, you you just mentioned about space situational awareness, right? And why do you think that it's gonna be business? Because it could be somehow business, why why you think this topic that can be business in in the future?
Thank you for asking this question, yes, that's a very good point. And yes, as I introduced in the presentation, I was working in Vienna as a diplomat. For this established new guidelines for the long-term sustainability of that space. And there are a lot of things we have to do to keep space sustainable for our activities long, long term. But there are a lot of things and there are a lot of chances for business, I suppose. Because it's a kind of the green innovation or green ecosystem in in outer space. There are much more activities occurring, however, we we need to solve a lot of problems. And there, if there is a problem, there is a chance for business. Like this, like our SSA idea, now we are depending on the governmental system, but. In in somehow, well, we have a lot of room to work in the business side for this task. And I I could see a lot of people working in the business side for establishment or. Ensuring the space activity safety in Vienna. So, that was a motivation for me to work, to to solve this question, this problem from business side.
For participants, I think we can see that we are talking about safety. From the space and from the earth, years from the forest wire and from space from the breeze. And talking about this and we we are talking about business, right? And maybe we have to talk with you, Mr. Aoki, because there are a lot of startups. Ideas in logistic, in fintech, in many technologies, by space. What do you think is why it's very interesting in going to space?
Yeah, first of all, I I used to be aerospace engineer by training. I was involved in the International Space Station program previously, so that's my mission to get involved in space business and support. And also being as a venture capitalist, as well as a space entrepreneur. Co-founded the three space companies already and supported more than fifty space companies, that that has been my mission, but the plus. Space has become a place for everyone and last ten years, if you want to manufacture rocket. Or satellite, the the cost and lead time has become much lower and much smaller, so it's. It becomes easier for anybody who wants to get involved in space business and that has been changing. And also the venture capitalists, investors have been pretty much interested in investing into space startups for the last seven years. So, in Japan, we have about one hundred space-related startups already. And also at the same time, we have over one hundred space investors, including Toyota, Sony and many listed companies. Who are interested in getting involved in space business, so things has been changed for last ten years, that's what, that's why I have been promoting these activities.
Is it linked to the government policy or international policy or not? I I see from Mr. Iwaki presentation, he's mentioned about UN COPROHS, right? And he joined the international policy. Is it because of the government push also in in this?
Right, even in the US, Europe and even Japan, Japanese government has launched a space industry vision. About six years ago to promote space entrepreneurship and space business, so that was also a big impact for the market.
In the same question for space, why it's very interesting to join? I would like to ask another idea from Ms. Tong Hatai. What do you think about space programs, space business, why why we have to going to?
Oh, oh, thank you for the question, basically, well, Thailand is running both the second batch of the the space tech incubation program, which. Probably will have the opportunity to share more about this later on, but frankly speaking, from the experience that we had last year. Running the program, we have identified ten successful space tech startups from various tracks. You know, from QSAT, Satellite Communication Services, Satellite Image Services and Remote Sensing. And having said that, you know, the incubation program, you know, with the space, you know, related entrepreneurs. Actually helped to drive the economy, you know, talking about the, you know, the the growing economy of the the space economy on a global scale. You know, the space has become a new frontier, not only in terms of the the technology. But basically has become a new frontier in terms of the commercial opportunity as well. And utilization of the space technologies, you know, both, you know, in the space-related and other non-space-related. Will have reached the point whereby we need to build a strong supply chain so that we can tap into this opportunity, that's why. You know, the raising awareness and driving the, you know, the the space incubation program to really surface the new pipeline is very important. To growing the industry, you know, midterm and to long term for for the country. And that's basically why, you know, we we actually, you know, the support National Innovation Agency to really. Help driving the program so that we have a large pool of talents and also the technology solutions to serve the supply chain, you know, in the mid to long term.
Believe that is some kind of ecosystem that we are trying to build and trying to promote ecosystem of of the space business. Um, with with this idea, I I think I would like to pin down to the S Booster. Um, what do you gain from 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 S Booster as the winner, this Kanjanit? I mean, maybe you you just mentioned the very first year, no, I'm I'm not the winner. And the next time, oh, okay, I'm getting a lot of experience, but can you pin point to the point that, oh? What you you gain exactly as the the winner or as the participants to the S Booster?
Okay, thank you, kha. First of all, as a winner of S Booster, yes, I think we 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 gained. We we can trust that from our partner. Based on our, since we are quite small startup and our project need to work with the government. And need to cooperate with the international satellite provider. As a winner of S Booster, yes, it's easier to to contract, contract to to them and. Would like to discuss and explore the collaboration, that is the first thing. And as a winner, during the periods of mentoring, based on the, when we be a finalist in Asia round. And take time around two to three months, the program of S Booster and the sessions of mentoring. Official and unofficial is very benefit for for our business. Since, as we know, sped sped technology is frontier. The model, the business model is not, especially utilize sped in the environment solution is quite tough. To build a business model, we need the expert and mentor to brush off. How to make our solution and business sustain in the future, otherwise. Even if the best solution is cannot, because every solution need the investment and money to 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 support. I think we got a lot in that part.
Uh, we 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 have, I mean, the another winner also with us, so Mr. Iwaki, with the same question. Um, what do you get from from S Booster? And actually, after you you won the prize. What you're going to do in in the very near future?
Thank you, yes, at least I can say three things I I got in the process of the S Booster program. First, the award, yes, the Special Judges Award is. They're great for me, but not for the award, but S Booster program gave me a kind of milestone. To develop my idea, so that was very big, of course, but in the process, it was materialized. And second thing was that it has a great mentoring support. In the course of the mentoring, I could elaborate my idea from various perspectives. Like business model, market size calculation, technical demonstration. So, those things are not established by myself or by, only by our teams, because we do not have. Expert for the presentation or for the business, we are the member of the experts in in JAXA, so from technical side, we have expertise. But for business or for this kind of business speech, we didn't have experience. And after the 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 selection or even in the process of the S Booster. We could gain the networking opportunity through the S Booster program. The secretariat introduced some operator, satellite operators to us. And that was a great opportunity for us, because the business doesn't occur without the customer. And the potential customer is satellite operators for us, so without the communication with those customers, there is not nothing. Just just idea does not work or we cannot earn money. So, the the this kind of networking was a great thing for me to to pass, yeah, after, yes.
Before before ending the program, I think I will spare five minutes for participant creation. But before before that, I would like to to hear some comments, because we we have two winners here, right? And all of the participants know about the S Booster program. Maybe Ms. Tong Hatai can add more comments or. Some kind of activity that Thailand can contribute to S Booster in your idea, please.
Well, basically, I think there are three opportunity areas, you know, we're talking about, you know, several programs being conducted, being launched. To promote, you know, deep tech entrepreneurs in the space industry. First of all, I think engagement is very important, you know, we could find the opportunity for participants from each program, both on the startup side. And on industry partners to engage more to whether in terms of the joint development, in terms of collaboration. And also in terms of sharing resources. The second thing, I think somebody already mentioned, you know, during the session, community building is very critical though, you know. Space industry is growing and be really in need of, well, a new and cutting-edge entrepreneurship in this area, so. Building the community around all the programs that being actually implemented at the same time would be something very critical to drive an ongoing success. And last but not least, you know, for each of the program, understand that there are corporate sponsors, corporate partners, industry partners, so. Collaboration of those participants in the program with the industry partners, that are the key, well, the contributor that would keep. You know, the the program moving and keep developing the pipeline, technology and talents in the region. And also, well, to make sure that we can actually apply all this technology and solutions to benefit the business as a whole. So, that's how we think that, you know, it's going to be something of a joy collaboration opportunities in the future going forward.
Think like sharing resources and capacity building is is where the the key success to this.
Yes, definitely.
Um, before I end I end of the my my question, I think. It's very important to link the S Booster with MGA, because we are in MGA conference. What do you think that? What do you think that how the genesis or postening and divocation related to the space business and how it's gonna be evolved in the future? I think like we have to ask Mr. Aoki for this.
Yes, I think it's for GNSS community folks to get involved in a new type of market. You know, markets such as flying cars, flying taxi, autonomous cars, drones, all the new market that's been emerging recently, they need to use GNSS technology. They need to have a precise positioning technologies, even for agriculture, autonomous car, everything. So those who are involved in this GNSS technology can combine with the existing large industries and come up with a new idea. And we would like to see those ideas to be applied for S-Booster for this year. So GNSS technology will be one of the key technology for improving our society.
I'm gonna come up with my last question, but for to all of you. I think it's very important question also. What is or what are the key factors to win the prize? So let me start with you first, maybe because you are the tutor and...
Yeah. I've been a mentor and judge since its inception. So I have some advice for people who want to apply for S-Booster and who wants to start maybe space business. So first of all, you have to be patient because space business, it doesn't happen over one night. It's gonna take longer time. You have to cooperate with the government. You have to discuss with international partners. Sometimes regulations not ready. So you have to be very much patient to start a space business. And another point would be to find your very niche market. You don't want to build large reusable rockets to compete against SpaceX. It's nonsense to do that. You have to find your very niche market so that your core technology can be applied and try to find very small market and start and try to make it bigger. And one last advice would be to get government support if you can. Of course, from JAXA, Japanese government, GISTDA, they will be happy to support your activities. And without government support, you wouldn't be able to succeed space business. And even SpaceX, they had a support from US government, NASA, and they won't be, you know, come that far without support from a US government. So that would be my advice.
Very good point, I think. Can we add some more ideas from Ms. Tong Hatay? How is the, I'd say, preparation of the participant to win the prize?
Well, based on experience, you know, from running several programs, because Inspire, our adventure-built company, we believe that, you know, those who are eligible to win, they need to have an insight. You know, those who have a solid industry insight, learning through the experts, you know, network, learning through, well, the resources provided from the program would be something of a key factor. And apart from that, I would say, well, entrepreneurial spirit and an ability to really apply that into the, you know, the business model and create a commercialization opportunity would be a bundle, you know, kind of factors that would make one a winner comparing to other participants' insights, entrepreneurial spirit and basically the understanding of what the industry needs. You know, what are the insights and the pain points of the industry? So you brought the technology into play and really tackle the industry challenges. That are basically, you know, something of the key factors that would make someone a winner, you know, to any particular program, frankly speaking.
Thank you. You add like spirit and pain point. This is, I think, very, very important. So, okay, we have two winners with us. Would you please share the key success to your win? Please, Ms... Oh, I think I'd like our first to Mr. Iwaki, please.
Thank you. Maybe about content for the business plan, as a presenter, a speaker has mentioned. So I want to talk about how to present your business idea. And that was the point which I focused in the practice for the final. And I tried to make my presentation again and again, maybe more than 100 times. My wife also memorized my script because she was hearing my practice. But this is a kind of competition. You can just approach to audience only one time, even if you have a lot of things we want to talk about, but you have only one chance. So I recommend you, if you join the contest, to practice your speech, your presentation.
That not only idea, but also we also that as the participant to join, this has to be prepared. So the last question to this stage, to you.
Thank you, kha. For the key to win the prize, I think I would like to define the word prize in two terms. First one is if, for me, I define the word prize in terms of opportunity to learn and develop since I come from a non-tech persons. Therefore, for me, opportunity to enter to this community and open my perspective in terms of space technology and business is a prize. Actually, it's a big prize. And key to success is, I think, we need to low down our ego because it's, yeah, it's difficult to explain, but it's very important because I think space technology is a frontier and lots of unknown. We need to open mind and open heart to learn and relearn sometime. And I think that that will be a shortcut for us to develop and understand this technology. For the second one, in terms of prize of winner, yes, I agree with my mentor. Passion is a marathon. Space technology and space business is marathon, lots of obstacle and challenge there. Therefore, passion comes first. I think we need to understand what is the high purpose of us, why we do it. Yes, we want to build business. And what is the core value that you would like to contribute this technology to people? Our team, we have a motto that technology that cannot serve a people, we call it waste. We not call it technology. Therefore, I think we need to understand and see the beginning with the end in mind that the thing that we start, what is the purpose that we would like to contribute? That is the first one. And the second one, beside the passion, practice and practice. The same as our friend, he practiced 100 times. For me, I practiced for the presentation when we rehearsal in the day that we need to present in a final round. I don't have a voice. And one of finalists chat to me and say that, Kanchanit, you need to drink a lot of water because you don't have a voice. Because my mentor said that if you nervous, you need to practice more. 100, 200 and sometimes 500. And we do that, we did it. And that is a key. Thank you.
That's why you won the prize. And I think I can, I can see that your open mind and your passion make it to this stage. So it's value to you and value to our society also. So I let the floor to the participants and question from online. Is there any questions that we can ask here also? Any question here? No question online? I think like our question are over to all the points. And thank you very much for our valued guest here in this stage. And I think like, hope to see you next time and not even the MGA, but any conference. I think like Thailand is eager to be part of the space business. And I think like we can extend our cooperation. I can hear from Ms. Tong Hatay that we are quite eager to work with partners. And I think like the community of space is getting bigger and bigger. And as Ms. Kanchanit said, she is not the one from space tech. But now I think like she is the one of the specialist of the space tech. And I hope that the participants will gain something from this seminar. Thank you very much for all speakers and hope to see you very soon in the new stage or new session. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much once again, our moderator and all the speakers.